Okay, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we are reconvening open session at seven o'clock PM. Tonight, we have a full school board meeting, but first, let's have Henry Elementary School, fifth grade student Caitlin Fujiwara lead us in the pledge.
Please, please place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we have a treat Henry Elementary students led by our visual and performing arts teachers, Ms. Laura Hollis and Ms. Leah Hawkins will lead our Henry Elementary School students with the presentation of "We Can Change Our World." Thank you to our Henry principal, Marianne Thompson, our teachers and our parents for being here tonight to support our student presentation. Go Henry Hawks! Okay, then, do we have a report out of closed session?
We do, we have several. Uh, report number one, in closed session, the board took action to issue notices to employee number 1979136, employee number 1216926, employee number 1035236, employee number 1298236, employee number 1304236, employee number 1048236, employee number 1167236, and employee number 1898826, that he or she shall not be re-employed for the 2016-2017 school year. The roll call vote was unanimous. Copies of the resolution are available in the lobby area. Second report, in closed session, the board took action to issue notices to employee number 1109126, employee number 1465326, employee number 1672816, employee number 1269726, employee number 1201126, employee number 1610426, and employee number 1262516, that they may be released from their administrative positions and reassigned to another certificated administrative position, classroom teaching position, or other non-management certificated position for the 2016-2017 school year, or that their work year and/or salary may be reduced for the 2016-2017 school year. The roll call vote was unanimous. Copies of the resolution are available in the lobby. Next report, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to terminate employee number 1404236 effective March 10, 2016, and provide all required notices. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the request for a leave of absence for employee number 1912626, March 11, 2016 through May 27, 2016. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, we move on with presentations. First, we have our DSAC middle school reports, so I will turn it over to Natalie. Hi Natalie. We missed you last time.
So, the first one up is Noel Marin from J Hugh Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board, President O'Kelly, Superintendent Avila, and viewing audience. I am Noel Marin, ASB member from J Hugh Middle School. We have a busy start to 2016. We were invaded by the Galactic Empire during our Star Wars pep rally to cheer on our undefeated girls' basketball team, and now, our three-and-two boys' team. Check out J Hugh's Twitter page for epic pictures for all the fun we had. The Jaguars are in the middle of test prep for the cast with Spirit Day planned for next week to ensure all of our scholars are ready for the big test after spring break. Our annual open house was a huge success. We also had stopped by with some information for parents. PTSA was out in full force selling tacos and pupusas. Yearbook was selling the 2015-2016 yearbook, and Kona Eyes was in the house as well. Our crew team performed for parents and families before they headed off to other classrooms to see all the work we have been doing all year. As we head into the end of the school year, we are preparing to have our incoming sixth graders attend our annual moving on up dance. We are eager to crown our eighth grade king and queen at our royalty dance, and our STEM team is preparing for their competition as down the hallway, our very own ninja warrior, Kashawagi, is preparing for his wrestlers for the upcoming wrestling season. We also want to congratulate our February Employees of the Month for classified staff member, Ms. Martha Lopez, and for our certified, our certificated staff member, Ms. Mariana Gaten. Great job ladies. We want to give a huge shout-out to our girls' basketball team on making it into the finals today. J Hugh is the identity activity as we wind down the year. We invite you to come see all the academic, athletic, and extracurricular activities going on. This is Noel saying Jaguars giving our best, never setting for less. Have a great evening, everyone.
Next is Valerie Fregoso from Frisbee Middle School.
Good evening Superintendent Avila, members of the board and viewing audience. My name is Valerie Fregoso, here to represent Frisbee Middle School tonight. We have a lot of events going on as we close our third quarter. Did you guys know that Frisbee Middle School is turning 50 this year? That's pretty old. We would like to currently invite all of you to come out on March 16th, starting at 5:00 PM for our 50th celebration. We will have club booths, alumni guests, and speakers, taco catering, just to name a few of those activities planned for the event. Don't miss out, and don't forget to purchase your anniversary book for $5 apiece. T-shirts will also be sold that evening. This is an event that you won't want to miss. Then join us on April 1st for our 50 miles for 50 years of Frisbee. We are looking for relay teams of five runners. The runners will run 10 miles each. Each runner will pay $10, and the cost covers the medals and t-shirts. This will all take place on April 1st at 6:00 AM. If you are interested, please see Mr. Brinker at Frisbee Middle School. Cancer Club Wrestling, this Saturday, we will have a Cancer Club Wrestling event at 4:00. The tickets are $10 for adults and $5, I believe, for kids. Don't, sorry if I'm incorrect. And finally, Career and College Day. We have the date set. Our Career and College Day is set up for Thursday, March 17th, and we will have our speakers on campus providing information about new and exciting professionals, as well as having presentations by our own avid students. We want to bring, we want to bring to our students information that is uniquely geared toward providing the tools, knowledge, and resources to students like you seeking higher education and professions. Remember, knowledge is power, and we feel that now is the time to start thinking about your future. Those are all of the events happening at Frisbee. Thank you for your time and attention. Have a great night.
Thank you.
We have Destiny Lopez from Rialto Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and our viewing audience. My name is Destiny Lopez, and I am a proud ASB Vice President at Rialto Middle School. On February 18th, RMS hosted the district science fair. Our own Tiger, Victor Luna, has advanced to the county fair with a garage door screen. Next stop is Shark Tank. When Putting on the Ritz announced their show, announced their show on our, excuse me if I say the name wrong, Angelice Gonzalez has received the call that she will, she will be performing in April. Looks like Tigers got talent. Our boys' basketball team finished the season undefeated, and today, in the playoffs, we won, both of our teams won again, yet again. Our girls' basketball team finished the regular season with just one loss, and today continued with their winning streak to advance to the finals on Friday. Did we break away from our daily routine to read, sorry, did you break away from your daily routine to read to a child on Read Across America last Wednesday? I did. Our Builders Club ventured to Warner Elementary to read to 160 first graders and 25 second graders. I had a blast, and we had everyone their own book, a pencil, and eraser. We would like to give a special thanks to Rialto Education Association for giving us our grant to help us find, fund our celebration. Today, we, today was Take Your Parent to School Day. We had over 400 moms and dads join their kids as we went from class to class working on STEM projects and other academic skills. It was followed by a barbecue lunch, lunch on for all the parents and students. Next Monday is Pie Day, rounded up 3.14.16. The math classes will be challenged to show their math and engineering skills, and in return, they will get pie. No really, pie. We're gonna give them pie. Today, I, I got to enjoy an amazing presentation given, given by Ms. Joffrey and Dr. Avila about, um, sorry, about the amazing women in our community, and the amazing women in our lives, and the amazing women in California, and I would like to say thank you for that. Everyone have a fantastic spring break, be safe, enjoy family and friends, and when you return, it will be the last quarter of the school year. This is, this year has really flown by, and I will, and I will see you next month with news, with news from the STEM Bowl, soccer, leadership camp, which I'm like, yes, about, and, and much, much more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, we have Caitlin Brown from Casera Middle School.
Good evening, viewers, honorable board members, and Superintendent Dr. Avila. My name is Caitlin Brown, and I am the ASB President at Casera Middle School. Last month, we had a pep rally to commemorate our boys' and girls' basketball teams. We also recently had our annual open house, which was a very successful event. This week, we have been showing the incoming sixth graders around Casera, so they'll be prepared for next year. So far, Dunn and Cordier came, and from what I saw, they enjoyed it. Today, we just started a PTA fundraiser, and we'll be selling coupon books. Soon, Abbott will also be doing their fundraiser, but they'll be selling chocolate. Thank you, and I hope you have a good rest of your night.
Okay, our next presentation will be about the Measure Y General Obligation Bonds, the Financial and Performance Audit Report for the year ending June 30, 2015, presented by the Measure Y Bond Oversight Committee. Hello Paula and Sarah.
Yes. Good evening, President O'Kelly, it's exciting to say that, board members, viewing audience, and cabinet. My name is Paula Bailey, and I am actually the Chair of the current Measure Y Oversight Committee, and I'd like to introduce, I have a couple of our other members here. We got Mr. Russell Silva in the audience, and Ms. Sarah Garcia, right here next to me, and then there's some other staff here, Diane and Iris, and of course, our Mohammed. I have a few things that were written for us to present to you from our audit. The purpose of the Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee under Proposition 39 is to, is to inform the public about the expenditure of the bond proceeds. The committee may participate in the following activities: review copies of the annual independent performance audit, review copies of the annual independent financial audit, inspect school facilities for which the bond proceeds have been expended. A representative from our audit company presented to our committee on March 3rd that the financial and performance audit is as of June 30, 2015. For the fiscal year ending 2014-15, the auditor's opinion was unmodified. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control reported. No findings have been reported. So, wonderful news! And next year should be just as fabulous, although we do have lots of projects that are gonna be moving forward and really exciting. I'm sure lots of you have seen the brand-new marquee over at Eisenhower, the additions at the schools that truly needed them, and we were really smart with the money that we got from the bond because we matched funds where we could, and we took, you know, took advantage of ways to maximize our spending. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next presentation will be Think Together, Expanded Learning 2015-16 Program Report Presentation.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the board, student rep, Dr. Avila, members of the administrative cabinet, community members. We're here this evening to give you a brief presentation on, on the ACES program, the after-school program, that we are blessed to have the opportunity to be a partner with Rialto Unified School District. Our purpose is to share the highlights and accomplishments of our partnership that, that we've developed here in the district and, and the community. The following we'll, we'll present tonight, Director of Operations, Diego Diaz, Director of Program, Shelley, Sally Martinez, Quality Assurance Coaches, Kenisa Nash, Albert Barajas, and Erica Constantino. Members of the board, we provided you the following materials. You have a full report, a PowerPoint that, that we will demonstrate shortly, quality standards, the LIS principles, those are the learning and after-school principles, and finally, the QSAT, which is the Quality Self-Assessment. So with that, we'll begin our presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. If you can please refer to your quality standards for expanded learning in California packet, and pay, and turn to page six. The quality standards were developed through a partnership between the California Department of Education After-School Division and the California After-School Network Quality Committee. The quality standards describe high levels of quality of a program, at a programmatic, staff, and participant levels. The quality standards are the central components of the cycle of quality improvement. The quality standards are categorized in two areas. The ones on the left are the point-of-service, which are, which are directed towards the students, and then the ones on the right are the programmatic quality standards, which are more program-based standards. There has been intentional collaboration taking place with principals and site coordinators from each site. At the beginning of the school year, in September 18, 2015, there was initial principal kickoff meeting, and the purpose of the meeting was to identify two of those, two to three of those quality standards to focus throughout the school year. And then, up, current updates are provided in your program quality report by site towards the end of the, the report. Think Together programs also implement the learning and after-school and summer LIS principles. These principles are used to reflect on how well program is aligned with supportive, supporting active collaborative, meaningful, supports mastery, and expanding horizons learning. The tool we are using to assess the overall quality of programs is the QSAT, which is abbreviation for Quality Self-Assessment Tool. This tool has significant alignment with the California Quality Standards. On March 8, 2016, we had a Quality Self-Assessment Tool Reflection Meeting, and the objective of this meeting was for our principals and our full-time site coordinators to work collaboratively to identify strategies to further support and strengthen alignment with, alignment and linkages with the school day, family involvement, and effectively supporting our English learner students. This was all, this will, this will also ensure we are in compliance with CDE's, Continuous Quality Improvement Process, and most importantly, providing a quality program to our students.
So as Albert discussed, you guys will see in these pictures, the two meetings that we had discussed, which are the principal's kickoff meeting, and in the pictures, you'll see some of the identifying activities that we did with our principals, where they were working with the 12 quality standards. And then, on the other side, you'll see the Quality Self-Assessment Tool Reflection Meeting that we just had, and the, these pictures reflect the activities that they did in terms of building a work plan to pull into their site in terms of building the quality of program up.
Good evening. The California Department of Education requires that all after-school education and safety programs meet at least 85% of their target average daily attendance to remain fully funded. As noted on page two of the quarterly report, a highlight that we like to share is that all Think Together program sites are currently meeting this requirement. This academic school year, we have served 2,849 students. We currently have 1,051 students on a waitlist across the district. Site coordinators are working with each school to enroll students in the program and to notify parents when openings are available. We believe that attendance is a key element to determining the level of impact made on the academic lives of our students. When students are not meeting attendance requirements as per CDE guidelines, there's communication with parents and principals before students are dismissed from program. This will then open spaces up for students on the waitlist. Next, on page four of the quarterly report, we would like to highlight the collaboration taking place between the school day and program to support students within the following populations: English language learners, students with special needs, Foster and McKinney-Vento. Our site coordinators work closely with school day staff to create school-lined health and safety procedures for students which support a safe and supportive environment. The program also follows the direction of school site administrators by implementing strategies that support all of our students. Our staff actively encourages students' participation in the program while being mindful of their needs.
Good evening, everyone. Now, I will share with you staff residency. One of the, one of the things that Think Together understands is the value and importance of hiring from within the community and preserving local employment opportunities and supporting our local economy. As you will be able to see there, the largest percentage of staff that Think Together has in Rialto Unified School District is from Rialto, Fontana, and San Bernardino. 100% of those staff members are, you know, within the Inland Empire boundaries. We have systems in place as well to ensure that all of our employees go through, go through the proper channels in order for us to ensure that they pass currencies and they pass, you know, the different pieces of DOJ and FBI in order for them to work with our kids. Also, we always obviously look for them to be passionate about teaching and passionate about mentoring our students. You will see on page five, the raw data for that, which is 27 of the staff members reside in Rialto, and then, as I mentioned before, San Bernardino and Fontana are the other parts that, that we have employees at. The other piece that I wanted to highlight is that 14 also of our employees that reside in Rialto work outside of, of the Rialto Unified School District, and those are at our home office, which are our hub office here in, in Waterman, and also in other nearby districts. So I wanted to highlight that for you. The next piece that we wanted to highlight is qualifications. As you will able to see there, we have qualifications for site coordinator and program leaders. I will not necessarily go into detail with them, but I wanted to share and highlight the collaboration that we have been doing with the Senior Director of Personnel Services, Rhonda Kramer, as well as our liaison, the director, Senior Director Angela Bradley, on collaborating, on ensuring that we bring flyers over to each of our school, school sites and place them on the bulletin boards in order for us to hire within. So this will give us an opportunity to continue to hire within the district and be able to employ instructional aids if, if, if they're available. The other piece that we wanted to highlight is that we've contracted with CODIS. CODIS is the agency used by Rialto Unified School District to provide test materials to ensure valid employee test instrument. This will align not only the instrument that the school is, is using... This will align not only the, the instrument that the school is, is, is using, but also our instrument as well. So we want to thank he, thank, um, Ms. Angela and Ms. Rhonda for their collaboration. The next piece that I want to go into is staff information. You will see that 18% of them, of, of our staff currently are in education program. Seven, seventeen, I'm sorry, 18% are in, in an education program. 17% are staff, of, of the staff graduated from Rialto Unified, from Eisenhower, Rialto, and Carter High School. 22% of those, uh, uh, staff members participated in the Avid program. And 47 are, are bilingual, uh, staff members. Uh, with the highest level education being a bachelor's degree, as that is one of our requirements for our site coordinators. So that reflects that. On page six, you will see the raw data of your report, and you will be able to, um, see that raw data, uh, there. The final slide that I will share with you tonight is, um, the Rialto, um, ethnicity, uh, piece. And as you know, Think Together is reflective, um, the staff is reflective of the ethnic makeup of the Rialto Unified School District. We, uh, as you will able to be, be able to see, um, this contributes to a strong connection, uh, between staff and families. Not only that, but the goal is to recruit and retain, uh, and, and, and create a positive learning environment for our students in order for them to, uh, have, uh, a positive, um, uh, time in program. Uh, this will entail, uh, positive relationships with our students. Um, again, you will be able to see some raw data of actual ethnicity on page seven of your report, uh, which will highlight that, you know, the Hispanic and Latino community is at 72 of our 114 staff members, uh, that are of that ethnicity. And then we have, uh, Black and African-American at 23, white at eight, Asian and Pacific Islanders at three, and others, uh, at, at eight. For that, I will pass on now the next person.
This year, we have implemented success folders, a system to support reading and math fact fluency. Each student has a folder, and each success folder contains grade-level sight words, fluency passages, and math facts. Students engage in this practice daily and are assessed three times a year. Our program goal is that students will demonstrate statistically significant growth toward grade-level fluency. On the graph pictured on page eight of the quarterly report, you will see that the baseline scores are in blue and the mid-year scores are in orange. The word lists use our fri words, which include the most commonly-used words in English reading and writing. The word list progressed by frequency and difficulty. Focusing on sight words ensures that our students are focusing on foundational skills that support the development of vocabulary, reading fluency, and comprehension. Our results have shown, I'm sorry, our results have shown a growth in each level by the following. First grade, 40 words. Second grade, 60 words. Third grade, 90 words. Fourth grade, 30 words. And fifth grade, 10 words.
For fluency, we use a reading A through C, fluency K, fifth, uh, passages to progress in levels of text, uh, complexity. The leveling system follows the guidelines for determining text complexity outlined in the Common Core State Standards. This component is focused on the fact that fluent readers read more quickly and smoothly, allowing them to focus on comprehension. They gain more meaning from the text and enjoy reading more than the students that devote all their energy and, to sounding out the words. And if you referred on the same page, page H, the results show from first through fourth grade, they each moved a level. But as for fifth graders, a score of 24 is above proficiency. So the reading, the reading A through C, K, fifth grade fluency curriculum only reaches the level Z, which is a score of 23. Fifth graders were exposed to the level Z1 and Z2, transitioning them to grade, sixth grade level, which sends, uh, level Z1 is scored at, at 24. If you turn to page nine on your, um, quarterly report, for math facts, automaticity of math facts is our goal. Students that retrieve math facts automatically are likely to experience high cognitive levels of thinking to perform a red, a range of complex mathematic operations. And on the graph, our results show that for first grade, they maintain the same level. For second, they move two levels. For third and fourth grade, they move one level, whereas fifth grade moved three levels.
Another highlight is a, is a grant that we secured with the support of Dr. Ed D'Souza. Our partnership with Edison International has made it possible for our five middle school programs to receive STEM units of study and experiences. The STEM unit, the STEM curriculum takes the students through the scientific method and the engineering design process. There's a strong focus on making observations, asking questions, predicting, and providing evidence for claims. All of the experience, uh, experiments and design projects are hands-on and student-centered. Through our partnership with Edison International and the Wylen Foundation, we are able to provide water education through the Clean Water Mobile Learning Experience to students at Colb and Rialto Middle. Students will get an opportunity to engage in interactive learning experiences that include them learning about food, learning about water ecosystems and water conservation.
This academic school year, we have accomplished 2,025 Volunteers Hour. We have 101 volunteers, 23 of which are students from Carter, Eisenhower, and Rialto High School. Another highlight that we want to emphasize today is the partnership that we have with Rialto Unified and Think Together. We are working to provide high school students within the district the opportunity to participate in an unpaid internship designed to give them the experience in the field of education. 15 students receive on-the-job training in the following areas: professionalism in the workplace, classroom and behavior support strategies, tutoring and homework support, and lesson plan facilitation. We would like to thank Laura Kelly, Eisenhower High School Internship Coordinator, for all her support. At the bottom of the slide, from left to right, you will see Claudia, Nadia, and Alexandra, their students in that program. Building a strong partnership and implementing successful alignment practices requires stability. It takes dedication, intentionality, shared values, and trust. Think Together brings years of experience and expertise, and we are committed to consistently implementing systems and structure. We hold ourselves accountable to ensuring excellence through our partnership. And we believe that supporting and encouraging our students in their development is a community effort. And we look forward to making a difference in the lives of our students and families in our community. So we would like to thank you for your partnership.
Thank you very much. That was a very, uh, informative presentation. I appreciate, um, the handouts and everything else. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
For Think Together?
Um, so just looking at the, the data and then you'd be, um, kind of breakdown on what the services and what kind of intervention that you all do. Um, what do you do at the middle school? That was only, um, at elementary school level. What is the program or what kind of interventions and data do you have around the middle school, um, services?
So a lot of the middle school data comes from the curriculum that we do. So we do pre, post, and, um, pre, mid, and post-assessments for the middle school programs for all of the curriculum that we do. Um, and so we will also, for the Wylen visit, which we showed up there, where we also have a pre and a post-assessment for that one. The Wylen visit today was Colb's Wylen visit, and tomorrow will be, um, Rialto's visit. So the data will come after that.
Okay, so is that why you didn't present it now?
Right, we talked about the visits that we had, but the data will come afterwards because we're in the middle of performing them still.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then are you planning to, again, give us, I don't want to wait a whole year to get the Wylen visit, you know, data. How soon after the visit will you be able to prepare something to let us get an idea of what's going on at the middle school?
Thank, thank you for, for asking that.
You're welcome.
Into the microphone, please.
As, as, um, agreed upon, we wanted to give a, a, a beginning of the year, um, report, a mid-year, and an end of the year. So during that end of the year, we could include some of the middle school, uh, information and data.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And one other question I had was about the, what was it, Winko Vente, the demographic, um, yeah. And I'm like, okay, I know low socioeconomic is one of the LCAP delineations. Yeah, it was the, okay, thank you. Expertise on the board. That was my last question.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. Okay, comments, public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any? Dr. Avila?
Yes, we have two. First, we have Nora Mendoza and Maria Sandoval. They were here earlier.
Laura Mendoza and Maria Sandoval, do you still wish to speak?
There she is.
I would like to share with you guys, first of all, good night, good evening. I'm so happy to see you again. I just came to share a little bit of what we need in our district. We need authentic teachers, not only instructors. Instructor is someone who only gives information. A teacher is someone who develops that intelligence and the will. That makes the artwork possible that is within each student. A teacher is someone who gives himself completely to the students. Hoping, hoping to change the future of humanity through their students. If you're afraid of the teacher. He is a simple instructor. In our district, we only have few authentic teachers. If the ins, instruction is, is, doesn't work for the human being, it just doesn't work. In our district, we have a few instructors that are called teachers. Which is starting at the kindergarten level. Don't give a recess to the children. At a very short age, our kids are being segregated. And the parents don't realize because they assume that we don't care about our children's education. Teachers that, in case that the students come late. Or if they don't read. Or if they ask permission to go to the bathroom during instruction time. They, they take away their recess. Mr. Avila. If you don't reclassify that, the, the personnel that we have employed. We would not achieve the necessary changes successfully. Having a se, a security supervisor. Which from years behind, he came up with the idea that, that, that parents were not allowed to go into the elementary schools. For security. It's incredible, isn't it? In our s, schools, there's a policy code. Six-two-seven-two. Where it says. Here, here comes my English. All visitors are required to register at the school office upon entering the campus during the hours of 7:30 and 4:30. We understand that safety is important. But the code is not being enforced. They look at the parents as criminals. We pay your, your salaries, don't forget. To question the abuse of the students. They implement security to intimidate. And they solve it by prohibiting the entering of the parents. Until they fulfill their fingerprints and TV tests. What about with the parents or with, with children in kindergarten? And those who are off work and would like to come in to see the school environment. Don't forget about the importance of the, of the effective information and not the destructive information. I understand we have a lot of codes that have not been implemented. But at the times that we as parents, uh, question all the codes. All the codes are being used to keep us outside. You as, you as you talk with your, with your partners. How many of you can realize of the poorness of heart that they possess? That even though they have high administrative positions. They're only occupying a space and getting a very good salary. FLI. Has to be obligatory for everyone working with their children. Unfortunately. The charge that we used to have before in our district turned them into. People that would conform. And left them without a heart. And without passion for their work. Thank you, Mr. Avila. Because I know. That by removing the rotten apples from our district. We will achieve, uh, a successful academic success in our district. Thank you, Mr. Raoul Wilson. A great man that, what he was like, he fought for the, for the rights to be respected in the district. Mr. Mr. Wilson, rest in peace. His fight was not in vain. Thank you for the extra time you gave me.
Thank you.
And just FYI, colegas and colleagues.
Next, we have, uh, Ms. Celia, Celaya.
Después de la regañada viene lo bonito.
After the complaints comes the beautiful thing. The concern.
Buenas noches, miembros of the Mesa Directiva.
Good evening, members of the Board of Directors. Mr. Kelly, President of the Board, Mrs. Kelly. Uh, Mrs. Mrs. O. Kelly, President of the Board. Dr. Avila, Superintendent. And audience.
I'm Celia Celaya Saravia. And I represent United Friends. Group of Partners of Special, Kids with Special Education, Parents with Kids, Kids with Special Education. And we would like to congratulate our Board of Directors. And also Dr. Avila. Because in the time that he has been in our district. The parents can feel the difference. That our district is improving. We hope to continue working together. For the well-being of our students. And our community. And we would also like to congratulate Dr. Avila. For his birthday. We wish you a lot of blessings. And I would like to add one more thing about Dr. Wilson. Rest in peace. He taught us to fight for our education. And for our district. He woke up many of us parents. I would like to ask you to sing, to, uh, to sing along with us, happy birthday to Mr. Avila. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Ha, ha, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. Avila. Happy birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Thank you.
God bless you.
He has birthday for Saint Patrick's Day.
Because we wish you a lot of luck here in our district. Please don't get fired. Hopefully, hopefully you won't run away. Because we who fire people is us, the parents who, that's what we do.
Thank you. Are there any other comments off the agenda?
No ma'am.
Okay, now, public comments on agenda items, any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have none.
And there are none, so we will move on with comments from Association Executive Board Members. Uh, do I have a representative here from REA, Rialto Education Association? Is she coming down the hall? Okay, we'll move on with comments from California School Employees Association, CSEA. Here is Ms. Silva, President Silva.
Good evening, Board, Doctor Abila, Cabinet and Audience. Um, I just really want to talk tonight because I would really like for the Board to recognize the employees of our payroll department. Um, as you know that we have had numerous, um, negotiation issues throughout the last year and um, our ladies in payroll have just spent numerous hours getting people caught up on their pay for the fourteen, fifteen school year. So there's a lot of retro hours and things that have to be looked up, researched and everything else, and they already have an eight-hour day job. So they put in a lot of time to make sure that all of the CSEA members could get their longevity, get their clothing allowance reimbursement and, um, their additional time on their card, uh, on their check next Wednesday. So I just kind of wanted to know if there is some way that the Board could give them the recognition that they deserve because they've really put in a lot of time. And, um, then I also wanted to let you know that we will be voting on our contract on the eighteenth, which is the last day before we go to spring break. So let's all cross our fingers and hope that things go well, so that we can go into spring break and relax. Um, and other than that, Happy Birthday, Doctor Abila, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a representative here from CWA, the Communication Workers of America? Really? I'm surprised. Okay, you're on. Uh, and the Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA? Okay, I guess not. And now we will move on to comments from the Superintendent.
Thank you, President, uh, O'Kelly, it has been a rather exciting first part of the month as we begin, uh, March as, uh, Women's History Month, and yesterday, of course, was also International Women's History Month. And today I had the opportunity to share with.
If it wasn't for women, there wouldn't be any history. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
So today, this morning, I had the opportunity to share with our DSAC students, um, as they did, sharing the one, uh, woman in their individual lives who has, uh, made a big difference. And it was very difficult, as I'm sure it is for each of us, so I'm sure that each of us has had more than one person female that has made an impact. And for me, as I share with them, all of my, um, personality traits, leadership skills, uh, abilities that I possess, I learned from my mom. Uh, who in spite of having just a third grade education, uh, gave me the sound and wise advice on how to be a productive, uh, and positive human being. Uh, that I believe I have cultivated simply by observing, uh, her do her thing at home. As we know, they, uh, moms are the fiscal agents of the home, the nurses, the cooks, uh, the mentors, the counselors, the disciplinarians. And taking on that, uh, immense responsibility really made, uh, me, uh, as, as responsible as a son as I could be. And so I want to thank my mom personally for shaping me into the human being that I have become today. The others, one was a seventh grade teacher who fortunately was, um, so skilled at recognizing, uh, the difference between the youth who, uh, were headed in the wrong direction. Uh, and she had intervened in that community for many, many years. It was a seventh grade, uh, algebra teacher who saw me begin to go in a different direction. Uh, and having been in that school for many years, she knew the, uh, trajectory of, uh, certain students from certain communities. And she saw me, uh, beginning to go in, in the wrong direction, uh, but saw the potential that I had and was, uh, kind of took me under her wing and redirected all of my energies into something very constructive and positive that I believe was a big turning point, uh, for me. And then the third one was a counselor at the community college that I attended. I had started my third year in community college because I was still a little hesitant of transferring to the university. And for some reason, one day she called me out of class and kind of scolded me for having a four-point-oh, all the transferable credits and not having decided to move forward with it. I was still very indecisive, and so she forced me to fill out an application to UCLA, uh, had me write my, uh, letter of, uh, interest. And a couple of months later, I received the, the notice from UCLA that I had been accepted. So I credit her for really getting me, uh, started on my professional trajectory and ever since, um, it's really forced me to be, to take a lot of initiative and not wait for others to find, uh, those skill sets in me. And again, contributed to my professional career quite a bit. So I had a great opportunity to share that with students and it was, uh, pretty emotional because we don't, I personally don't take the opportunity to thank, uh, some of those individuals that have made a such an impact on my life unless there are official days like this. So to all the women of the world, I'd like to give them a big shout out, a big thank you for, uh, doing what you do each and every day. Knowing that it's not an easy thing to raise, uh, to raise kids and do all the other things that you're responsible for or that are put on your shoulders day in and day, day out as, uh, the women in the home, so. Big thank you to you. And although it was not officially the Read Across America Day, I was going to be out in Sacramento on March second. I did take the opportunity to visit two classrooms at, uh, Kelly Elementary. I was invited by teacher Maureen Traynor and had such an amazing time in reading to two classes there, um, stories, uh, about, uh, Dr. Seuss. And it was very impressive at the interest that the kids, uh, uh, shared in having me read to them. So it was a wonderful experience there, just as equally as seeing the kids from Kodiak, Preston, Casey Myers, uh, their excitement over Read Across America that, uh, was available on our Facebook page. And to all the, uh, teachers of the district, uh, support staff who promoted literacy during, uh, Dr. Seuss Day. I want to thank you for, uh, doing what it is that you do to promote literacy in our district. Uh, just yesterday, uh, the Rialto Host Lions Club announced its, uh, top first, uh, place winners for the seventy-ninth Annual Student Speaker Contest. I understand we're not yet allowed to public, publicize or announce the names until the person is selected by the state. But what I can tell you is this is another big, uh, proud moment for Carter High School. And speaking of Carter High School, congratulations to the Carter High School Speech and Debate Team and Freshman Show Cheer. Six students from the Carter High School Speech and Debate will be going to the state, uh, next month. And the Freshman Show, uh, Cheer won the national championship in that category, the Freshman Show Cheer in Las Vegas, understand, last week. Also, we are known as NASA Now, the NASA Jet Propulsion Laboratory welcomed twenty-one, uh, Rialto Unified School District students to, who toured the facility uh, for President Obama's My Brother's Keeper Initiative. Students visited the spacecraft Assembly Facility, Space Flight Operations Facility, and the Mars Yard to see the twin of the Curiosity Mars Rover. We are also very happy and pleased to announce that of the eleven selected in the nation, one of our own teachers, Ms. Marie Thornsbury from Hugh Banks Elementary School will be going to space on Sofia, the seven forty-seven SP jetliner sometime in August for a week to conduct various astronomy lessons, so congratulations there. And this morning, I had the, uh, opportunity to congratulate and present certificates to Kiwanis Club of East Rialto Student of the Month from Carter High School and Eisenhower High School. Congratulations to Carter Seniors Jonah Vargas and Andrea Torres and Eisenhower Seniors Guadalupe Santana and Moises Moreno. On March fifteenth, twenty sixteen, Rialto High School Students of the Month, uh, Terry Tyrone Clay and Brianna De La Mora will be honored by the Kiwanis Club of Rialto. One reminder, on March fourteenth, twenty sixteen, at nine AM, we have our CNG groundbreaking at two six one South Lilac Avenue in Rialto. And yes, we are monitoring the weather. And of course, on March sixteen, twenty sixteen, at five thirty PM, we'll be, uh, join hundreds of Happy Falcons commemorate, to commemorate Frisbee Middle School's fiftieth anniversary on its campus. And kudos to Eisenhower School graduate, class of nineteen seventy-four, Mister Todd Mason Gilbert, who published his first novel called The Sacrifice. In the foreword of the book, he thanked his Boyd Elementary Teacher, Ms., Mrs. Wilma Wimmer, and then Mister Charles Wesley Grande, his Western Civilization Teacher at Eisenhower High School, for having a profound effect on his life and never quitting on him. Congratulations, Mister Gilbert, for the national publication on your book and making the Rialto Unified School District and its community extremely proud. And lastly, my quote from The Little Big Book with Fifty Big Ideas. Title for this one is Three Things Leaders Get From Their People. Behaviors you exhibit, the behaviors you reward, and the behaviors you tolerate. You get back from your people the behaviors you exhibit, reward, and tolerate. Behaviors you demonstrate, demonstrate recur. Behaviors you praise, repeat, and behaviors you allow, persist. What are you getting? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move on to comments from the Board and let's start with, uh, Board Member, um, Edgar Montes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry Natalie. Let's start with, uh, our wonderful Student Board Member Natalie.
So as Doctor Abula said, there was a DSAC meeting today. And we did get to talk about some of the students as well as Doctor Abula and, um, Ms. Saeda Joffrey got to mention people that were inspirations in our life. And a lot of people mentioned their moms, grandmas, some people did mention dads as well. And I, I thought that was really cool because moms, dads, grandmas, whoever it is, whoever that inspiration is in your life, we often take them for granted and don't realize how caring and sacrificial that person can be for us. So I, I thought that was good that we took the time to mention them and should be appreciative of them always. We also did an activity where we had a piece of yarn and we all stood in a circle, one person had the piece of yarn. And you had to state a fact about yourself, so something you liked to do or something, uh, about school that you liked, or say if you were an older person, it liked your job that you liked. And you had to pass it to a person that had something in common with you and they'd say, "Me too." And once you passed it to that person, they'd state something about themselves and so on. And in the end, it created like a web in the middle of the circle of, of the yarn. And the purpose of the activity was to show that there is a web of connections between all of us. And instead of focusing, focusing on the, the differences between us, we need to focus on the commonalities. And I thought that was really cool because we tend to do that a lot. If someone is different than us, we'd focus on that difference, but we need to focus on what we have in common. And I thought that was cool that we all got to learn something new about each other and learn more about our backgrounds and things we like to do. And it makes us closer and helps us to be leaders when we are able to engage with others. So I thought that was a cool activity that we did, so thank you for that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie, you always have something inspirational to say, I appreciate that. Uh, Mister Montes.
Thank you, uh, Board President, Mrs. O'Kelly. Um, I just want to, uh, thank everybody first, uh, for being here tonight. I want to welcome back, uh, Mrs. Nora Mendoza, um, and, uh, the other parent with you. Maria. Sandoval. Um, I want to welcome her back too. I, I just, um, you know, we, we're advised not to respond many times to, to concerns and to comments. But, um, uh, sometimes I just can't help myself and I want to. So, um, I, I just want to tell you that, um, no más les quiero decir que, um, you're more than welcome to come and voice your concerns at any time. At least me as a, uh, board member, um, you know, feel that everybody is welcome to come here and, and share your concerns. Regarding, uh, some of the concerns that you shared with us, we have heard them in the past and, um, and hopefully, um, we can, uh, start to really, um, try to make some, uh, adjustments or some changes regarding the concerns that have, that have been brought forward in the past. Um, in regards to school safety, I think most parents and, and people in the community want us to have, uh, a program, a system in place district-wide uh, for school safety. Um, but at the same time, that, that, that system should not be used against parents or anybody from the community in regards to, you know, uh, a site visit or a classroom visit or an office visit. Um, so, uh, just without knowing, um, what you or any of the other parents might have specifically, um, gone through or be going through. Um, I just would like to ask, um, uh, our staff to really take, uh, a good look at some of the, uh, either district-wide or site-level policies in regards to, um, school safety to make sure that the schools are safe, first of all. And then also make sure that some of the safety policies are not being used purposely to keep anybody out of the schools. Um, you know, these are public schools and, and there should be some, uh, guidelines, um, to, there should be a procedure to allow anybody from the community without having to go through criminal background check or fingerprint check. You know, to have access when it's appropriate to the schools, um, for visitations or whatnot. If, as far as any concerns with, with, uh, regarding any of the, um, staff members at any school site or any district, uh, uh, site. Um, there's a, uh, procedure, uh, that we have, um, you know, of, of course, I think communication is always, communication is the key and always addressing any issues face-to-face or by phone or by, you know, whatever means possible, uh, to address any concerns with any staff member, I think, is a good idea to try to have dialogue or address any concerns with them directly. And if that doesn't work, you know, on good word, in good words and on good terms, if that doesn't work, then, you know, the, um, there is a procedure, there is a complaint form, there is supervisors, there's, you know, administrators that can be spoken to, there are supervisors to the administrators and there are supervisors to the supervisors, all the way up to the superintendent. So, um, you know, I, I always recommend when, whether, whether a member of the community contacts me, um, uh, by phone or, uh, runs into me or, or even if they come here, um, which they're more than welcome to. We always try to recommend to go through, uh, you know, a courtesy, a courtesy protocol to first address any issues with the, with the person you might be having an issue with and then go to, go to their supervisor and then so on and so forth. That way, nobody can tell you, "You didn't tell me" or "You didn't, I didn't know about this" or "I wasn't given the opportunity to look into this." You know, that way everyone, uh, in the chain of command is, um, given the opportunity to address an issue. And hopefully it doesn't have to go all the way to the desk or the door of the superintendent, you know. Um, and, and if it has to, then it has to, you know. Um, but we always want to, out of respect and courtesy for all of the different administrators and supervisors, we want to give everybody the opportunity to try to address the issues that they're responsible to address, uh, if it pertains to them. Um, and then last but not least, I just want. And then last but not least, I just want to, so thank you for coming and sharing tonight. And also, I just did want to also thank the people, the parents and members of the community for remembering Raoul Wilson, because he was a fighter. He passed away three years ago this year, eighty-one or eighty-two years old. And, you know, and he fought for, not only for parents and special ed students, but he fought for many injustices in many different communities. And I want to thank you guys for reminding, bringing him up and reminding me of him because he too is one of my mentors since middle school that I knew and that I looked up to and that I learned from. And as a matter of fact, we became so close with him and his wife, Victoria Vaca, that they adopted me as a godchild, or I called them ninos, you know, because of how close we became and because of how much I admired them. Aside from the fact that my real nino was never around, just baptized me and then never seen him again, Raoul was my nino. And he came to many, he came to many meetings here, and we have an archive, and every now and then, I like to look back at some of those very famous school board meetings where he came and he spit fire on that podium right there. So, thank you. Gracias, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you, President O'Kelly. Good evening, staff and parents. I think last week, I talked about how to combat a cold. Well, hopefully, tonight, I have something inspirational to say that might help parents, staff members, or kids. And, you know, we try to inspire you, try to say something that will benefit somebody out there in the audience. So, you know, this is a live show, this is not recorded, so we do our best. But too often, we see people who don't seem to be very happy sometimes, you know, down the dumps, have the mood swings, whatever it is. But I can remember when I worked with the kids, I'd have to find ways, creative ways to lift them up. But usually, the answers were found in this little triangle that I used to make, that I did not invent, but many of you are familiar with. But it starts with the title, it says, what does it take to be happy? What does it take to be happy? And, you know, the fundamental to start the day, you gotta eat. You gotta have something in your stomach. You go to school and you're just eating a candy bar or something that's going to exhaust itself within an hour or two, you're going to run out of gas. We're human, so you have to eat. So, parents, please, feed your kids something with protein. Okay, so then you're okay and you feel full, but as we progress in life, we still need a roof over our heads. Can't stand out there in the middle of a field and be happy with the sun bearing down on you. So food and shelter, that's important, basics, can't argue that. But what comes next? Okay, if you have a little baby and you don't hug that little baby, you don't attend to it, that baby could leave this planet in a not a positive way. People need to be hugged, you know, and I know sometimes in schools, don't touch that person, Geraldine, don't you touch me. But people need to be loved, they need to have love in their life, and that can be expressed in many, many different ways. Okay, so you can be creative, how you do that, just don't get yourself in trouble. Okay? But after you're hugged, is that enough? You've already been fed, you got shelter, and there's more than just love in your life too. You need more. We're humans. You need to feel good about who you are. If you get invited to a party and nobody respects you, nobody cares who you are, whether you showed up, even though you got the food, the shelter, and people love you at home, but you're not respected at that party, something's wrong. Maybe you're at the wrong party, hanging around the wrong kinds of people, or you're not bringing value to the table. And I'm talking about self-esteem. And the kids will come up many times, say, I don't have nothing to offer. Now, I tell you what, just go down to the local rest home and push a glass of water to somebody who can't reach for it, and you should be surprised how much value you have for that individual that you pass that water to. We just need to find ways to start moving downstream and not always going upstream with our kids. You try to teach a kid something he's not ready for, you're going uphill. Find something that he feels good about himself. Okay, now, so now you graduated and you feel good about yourself, is that it? No. Because if you're driving in your Cadillac and you see those kids sitting there on the curb somewhere, no jacket on, or you see a situation that needs attending, you're going to feel guilty as you light your cigar with a ten-dollar bill or twenty-dollar bill now. You can't live like that and be happy. So what I'm saying is, you have to be self-actualized. I know it sounds like a big word. Be the best that you can be. Do something, make a difference. What I see in this room, I see a lot of people who are self-actualized, and my hat's off to you, because every one of you give your time to make a difference for somebody else. That's who's in this room. But we also have a viewing audience out there wondering what to do with that remote control. Probably turning me off right now. But I will conclude with this. At the end, the formal education is the beginning of public service, and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Okay, Board Clerk, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Interesting how there are themes and no one called each other, and yet, here we are in uniform, and here we are, talking on similar topics. I wanted to tell the community a little bit about myself, but at the same time, give a little bit of encouragement and guidance to our young folks, especially those who are single-parent homes. My grandparents were, came to the United States, both set somewhere between nineteen fifteen and nineteen seventeen. Both were married by nineteen and twenty. There was very little occasion to really meet with my grandfathers or even my father because all were laborers and working hard. The first I remember dollar-wise, knowing what my dad was making working at Kaiser was a buck and a quarter, dollar and a quarter. How far back is that? Wasn't too far, it was actually about sixties. So when our young ones come up and say, fifty's old, and some on the board go, hey! Well, we remember the sixties and the seventies, and we remember the trials and the discomforts within the family because they had to, they had to work hard, they had to develop calluses and bad backs and aches and pains to put food on the table. The young ones nowadays really don't have to do that, they have a choice. One of my grandfathers said, what do you plan on doing to work? And he got the wheels turning. I was probably fifteen, sixteen. And he said, the one thing that I valued the most, he said, decide if you want an inside or an outside job. It's going to depend on each individual. My other grandfather was basically telling me, are you going to be able to survive on what you're going to be making? Could I survive on a buck and a quarter now? No. People are screaming for fifteen-dollar-an-hour minimum wage. Times are different now, but the struggle remains for many earners, wage earners, because they have to support a family. And early on, and I'm talking to the fifteen-year-olds, the sixteen-year-olds, trying to decide what their future holds, you have the choice now to work hard for a long period of time, fifteen until you stop working at maybe sixty-five. Or you have the choice of waiting and coming up against a lot of people who have deferred that choice till their earning years, their top earning years in their thirties and forties. And if that happens, then you're going to end up in a breadline. I know that I worked for the school district in Ontario for a while, the high school district. My first month or two, I got there and I called my dad and I said, Dad, I can't do this. I am bored stiff. I had come from doing piecework. The more hours you worked, the more work you got across the bench, the more you were able to earn, much like a mechanic at Toyota or any of the other places do nowadays. So when I went to school district, it was ten years later, after I was working as a technician, an electronics tech, and I was seeing ten-year-old equipment come across the school benches, and I'm going, oh, I thought it was going to be much better than this. I thought schools were well-equipped, much like our audience thinks they are. Well, we only have so much money to spend, and we're working on it. This board has been very good about that. The cabinet has been excellent. So, do you like to work indoors? Do you like to work outdoors? Are you able to put food on the table, earn a living wage? Then my dad said, do you like what you do? Because he was a laborer. And it's much easier to get up in the morning if you enjoy what you do. If you get up, and I'm still talking to youth and probably some other adults that have deferred their choice. If you enjoy what you do, it's a pleasure getting up in the morning and getting to Those jobs are very few and far between. In my teens, and I'm talking between twelve and twenty-two, I was in a regional band, and I loved that. I loved playing, three out of four nights, practicing one night, two nights a week. But then the guy said, do you want to get serious? Do you want to go touring? We were already touring, but they meant professionally touring. We were already getting paid, we were doing the work, we were doing all of that. And I said, no, because while I liked doing it, it was after doing my eight-to-five job, I was already doing a correspondence course in electronics, and this was just my release, just go out, have some fun. So I grew up very quick, and by the age twenty-two, I was tired of going out. But I say that little bit because it taught me the thing. You may enjoy what you do, but you have to count the cost. Was I willing to give up my day job and go touring professionally to put food on the table? Which leads me to the last bullet item. Is there work in what the young ones are being trained for? Meaning, are they being trained for office work, are they not caring, not going to school? You look at some of our youth, and I offer a prayer, because that's all I can do, because they won't listen to an adult. They have to count the cost now, while they still have a chance of survival, in turning their life around, much like our superintendent's story. And I just offer that as thought, because not everybody's going to be a superintendent or a retired board member, not everyone's going to be a teacher, not everyone's going to be, you know, a technician, computer tech. So everyone has a choice. Will you be able to find work? Will you be able to make a living wage? Will you be able to stand the work? Is it too fast, too slow-paced for your personality? So just some planting the seed of thought for our young ones, and maybe even some who are still in college. Is there work available in your chosen field that you're studying? Count the cost. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And now we'll go to Board Vice President, Ms. Deana Walker.
Just want to say, you made me almost cry over there, Dr. Avila, about who, your mom, you know, having such an instrumental part in who you are for Women's History Month. And of course, probably a lot of us say our mothers as well. And of course, my mom, definitely, and I laugh about how crazy, well, you know, now I say, well, even then, I said she was crazy because she was really eccentric and matter-of-fact, and the hammer-down and the foot-down and everything else, and college, where are you going to college? And it was just insane. But as I thought she was insane, all my friends are always like, you got the coolest mom. We wish you had a mom like you. And I'm like, her? Forty, fifty years later, I realized I did have a really cool mom who promoted education, who made us do things that we swore up and down we couldn't do, but we did and made us follow-through on things and stand up for others and be a voice for other people. So had it not been for my mother, I wouldn't be here as a board member. The second person is, was, is, she's still alive, Dr. Shirley Weber, who in college at San Diego State, she was a professor of African-American studies, and she was the head department, department head at that time, and her charge to everybody, I never took one of her classes because she was so powerful, I was scared of her. I was like, I don't want to go in the class and not be a student and know everything, and I knew I was kind of like a party girl still, so I was like, oh, no. You know, I don't want her to realize I'm a fraud. So I was on the periphery around leadership, but I never took one of her classes but her role modeling. And at that time too, she ran for school board, and she sat on the San Diego School Board. She's now the Assemblywoman out of the San Diego District now, and this is going to be her third term. But as a role model, and you see how people are in your life and things directly and indirectly make you who you are. So what I'm really trying to say is celebrate the ones that are really connected to you. It's great and good to celebrate history of the folk you don't know, you've never seen, you've never touched, but talk and touch about the people that have made an impact in your life for real, and tell them before, you know, you're not putting flowers on their gravestone, that you're putting flowers in their hands. So just remember that. I was at a conference, this is why I've been in conferences for the last week and a half, three different conferences, but this last one was very impactful for me, which was the California African-American Superintendent's something, CASA is the acronym. And their theme was Cradle to College and Career. And a couple of, you know, key workshops, of course, I'm always going to go to parent engagement because it really, I understand and know that although I'm not a teacher in the classroom, I can affect what happens behind those doors, but as a parent, I can affect what happens surrounding that and make an impact and have a voice on, to give input on what other things are happening that some people may not know what's going on, you know? And it's key to go the channels, but also know that you have the podium here at any point in time, should you feel you need it. So that leads me to the most three impactful workshops that I attended there were first was, my first workshop was around parent engagement, and this was Linwood Unified. One of their parents was doing a workshop on how they galvanize their parents to get a voice within their district to make sure, although they're a small population, these were African-American parents, a very small population at Linwood Unified, they were able to galvanize their parents in the district to express the concerns for African-American children in that district and make them be addressed. And so even though they're a small number, so sometimes when special education children are not the largest number, or EL students are not the largest number, or GATE students are not the largest number, you still have a voice, and you have to create it to make sure that you get heard and your students get the services that they need and they deserve, and by law, that we are obligated to provide. So that's very key. So just to say that one piece, because it was them that organized to make sure that in their LCAP with these new monies, that they actually had line items and their LCAP talked about those, their group of students, so that they weren't left out. So that's first. The second one was so powerful, I mean, everybody was like blown away, the people got standing ovations, was on safety and security, and safety and the issues what we do in schools to keep kids from being in class, right? So the ticketing, the whole, you're getting in-house suspension, you know, third graders, you know, on down, sitting in offices, in the office, when they should be in a classroom, right? And how we are not able to handle our kids, who, especially the little kids, who just have energy and they're excited about being up and at school, and sometimes, because they do it to us at home, you're like, please, go somewhere, you know? But how we're not able to keep them in a class and engaged. And hence, that turns into behavioral things and people don't want to teach anymore. And so they talked about that and how schools and school districts and administrators and policymakers can make sure that we're not putting policies in place to keep kids out of the classroom. And so that we have to really look at what we're doing as far as safety and discipline and really, we are calling it punishment in a lot of cases, and failure to educate our kids on what we're doing to make sure that we keep kids in the class. And so I'm pleased because Dr. Avila sent a team of people there. So I think it was about five, seven, I don't know. About seven of us went down there. And some of us were able to sit in the same workshop. So we actually were able to think and brainstorm on some things that they are already doing here in the district, thank goodness, that'll be moving forward in the near future. But also some ideas too, because we do not want to be the district that is helping to fuel more seats, filling more seats in our local jails and prisons around here when we can be putting that money into educating our kids, right? And so we have to be very deliberate about that. So Erica just reminded me, like, we gotta give our people our props. If I had flowers, I'd give them to you, let me roll up and make one. We just had meetings about the fact that they just gave us a synopsis for safety and security, for safety and expulsions and, you know, the whole thing. For the entire year, we've only had 25 expulsions, way down from before. I mean, so it sounds bad even now, 25 expulsions. But if we were at 75 last year, that's good that we're finding other ways to keep. I'm not saying that we were at 75 last year, I don't have that number. So that's Angela Brantley and Leonard Buckner, who are working together to put in different plans and working with the safety officers and school administration to do some different things. So the school and safety thing. Even Fontana, we were talking about bringing those people that did the workshop down to our area and partnering to make sure that we have that and we get our people trained and how are we able to make better plans for our students to keep them in class versus out of class, especially our little ones. So the next, and the last workshop that was so, it was powerful, was a workshop that was done and it was around doing, literally deliberately looking at the LCAP and making sure again targeted people are in the LCAP and spelled out, not just saying, "All students will get this service, all kids." Because we know some of our kids, they don't get it. You know, you're like, "Everybody was spelled..." No, our kids didn't get it, you know? They'd never, that never came to us, you know? So that workshop was, it was done and I'm so, that was another reason I was excited because the presenters were from this area, they're all from the Inland Empire. Dr. Will Greer, who's a resident of Rialto, he teaches in the College of School of Education at Cal State. Dr. Luke, who teaches in education at Cal State. Dr. April Clay, who is also a counselor who works in this Inland Empire area with young people around counseling. And then our own Dr. Ayana Balagon, and they were a part of, is a VP at Cove now? Cove, Cove Middle School. But they ran this workshop around the LCAP and what you can do and as policymakers, how you have to ensure to make sure that all of your students are represented. They gave us the tools that are district, I mean, that are statewide tools that you can use to check your own LCAP and to see, are your kids getting what they need? Did the district put in what they said they were going to do? You need to be able to target and look at that, right? And hold people accountable. Our own district, now we're the policymakers, we're approving things. But it was so powerful, the whole room just got moving around and you can just see superintendents and assistant superintendent and board members moving to say, "Check our school, see what happened, you know, look at these kids, look at, find EL, find, you know, such and such, find African-American, find Native American." You know, we just wanted to figure that out. And when it was so powerful, everybody was like, "This is, this was phenomenal." And then I want to just say this, it was so phenomenal that the superintendent of San Francisco Schools, he's at his board meeting this past week and he got on the mic talking about how powerful this workshop was for superintendents, for, you know, to say, "This is how we see if we're serving our students." And he's at his board member and they sent, they sent me a clip of their board member, of him saying, "This was such a powerful tool and we must share this because this is only where we're going to be accountable for all of our students." So I was excited about that. I'll send the clip to you, Dr. Avila, just to say, you know, from that standpoint. And of course, one of our own, Dr. Balagon was on that, on that, did that workshop. And the last thing, and this is going to our own issues here and across the nation, but in Rialto, is our teacher shortage. And so every, for the last year, we've been talking about this teacher shortage. How are we going to get these teachers? And it's even going to be bigger in the next five to 10 years with people retiring and we're not putting other teachers in the funnel. And the biggest thing that came out was that we have to figure out a way to get more teachers and diversified teachers, more teachers of color, more male teachers, the whole shebang, you know, whatever. And so with that, you know, and we've talked about that, we were in Nashville talking about we need to build a teaching academy in our own district. The great thing was as they were talking about that, and then tonight Think Together talking about, they were giving an internship to students who wanted to get experience in the educational field. That already is a real-world connection. We've got to be looking at partnerships and how we're going to really bring these experiences to our kids to really engage, to be, get excited about education and being professionals so that we're not having bad apples, right? So we have good, you know, red apples with no worms, you know, in our classrooms who are excited every day about coming, that we're deliberate about supporting them and getting them through there. And I did look up future teachers, because when I was in school back in the day, the 70s, Future Teachers of America was this club that everybody, you know, if you wanted to be a teacher, well, that's no longer even a viable thing anymore. But still, we need to figure out how we can get even teacher clubs, future teacher clubs in our campuses as we hopefully build a way, a pathway in our own district to get more educators in the pipeline. So, long story, but very excited about the work that was done in Sacramento at the conference. And again, it's one of those things to go to conferences and you never bring anything back. You're like, "I went to this conference, you know, had a, you know, good time, met some people, but I didn't bring anything back, we didn't do anything." Literally while I was up there, I was talking with our staff and said, "What are you guys doing? What are we going to do?" You know, "How is this going to, you know, and everything, impact?" And we had, you know, over dinner, talking about things and everything. And so hopefully from that, we'll be, it's not hopefully, some things will happen. So by the time I'm off this board, you'll be like, "Ms. Walker talked about that." And this is how we're moving. So stay engaged, parents, stay engaged teachers and administrators because some of the ideas that you all have and the work that you want to bring to this district is phenomenal and I know it's awesome because I've spoken to a lot of people and I've heard things. So just onward and upward, thank you, Rialto.
Madam President, if I may, just quickly before we transition. It is a conversation that I had with those who attended that the excitement over the presentations was so visible and palpable. I did warn them that it tends to happen at conferences and trainings. But if you, when you come back, if you don't do something with those ideas, a day or two will go by and all that excitement will begin to go away and those ideas get shelved and nothing ever gets done. And so I do plan on having a follow-up meeting next week with those who went so that we can brainstorm, even if it's one idea that we agree that we're going to take and plant those seeds and grow it because it's going to be beneficial to our district, we're going to do that. And I wanted to publicly thank, as I did there, the President of CASA, which is the California Association of African-American Superintendents and Administrators. She's currently the Superintendent in Moreno Valley, Dr. Judy White. She transitioned, she left her post at that very summit. But I told her that this was by far, and I know some people may take it personally, but by far, this was the best conference summit that I have ever attended in the 20-something years that I've been in education. I have never seen something so powerful. One thing that I biasly expected, and I must say it publicly, that I expected a focus exclusively on African-American kids and it was totally not. There were conversations around African-American kids, but the tone was about all students. The tone was about policy and uniting to make an impact for an entire community. And the presenters were diverse. The plenaries that they had had some phenomenal speakers, very motivational. But again, for the record, this was the best conference that I have ever attended.
Better than CSBA?
Better, much better.
Is this an annual conference?
Yes.
So maybe next year, the whole board can go?
Want to put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sounds very worthwhile, thank you. Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and I hope you've been enjoying the beautiful weather we've had the past couple of days. See, I'm very concerned about water and I was really getting angry at El Nino for not doing his job. So now I think he's starting to work and we might keep him on because we're supposed to have more rain later this week and that's only good for us here in California. I want to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Martinez was talking about. When I, well, when I was teaching and when I was an AP and a principal, I would talk to kids, typically you talk to even a high school kid. Most of them, you say, "Well, what do you want to do when you grow up?" And the answer you get is, "I don't know." And so you say, "Well, what do you like doing?" And you try to pinpoint them. And so I remember this one conversation with a young man and what he loved was video games, as most high school kids do. And I said, "Do you know the number of jobs that it takes to make one video game? If you look at the credits on the video game, it's almost like a movie. There are so many opportunities there." And his eyes lit up because he thought, I think he thought I was going to put him down and say he was being silly, you know, about wanting to do video games when he grew up. The bottom line is, for kids, and I told them this all the time, if you find something that you love doing, that you find interesting and exciting to do, research what it takes to get a position doing that and go after it. Because if you do, find a job doing something that you love doing, you'll never work a day in your life.
Very good.
That's right.
It's not work then, because you love what you're doing. It's work when you hate getting out of bed every morning and going to the job. So, just a word of advice. I attended an informative event with Dr. Avila a couple of weeks ago. It was over at the, sponsored by the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Office called Modeling Our Future Through Collective Impact. And it was interesting, this is a relatively new concept, although some communities have already started. What they envision is bringing school leaders, superintendents and board members together with mayors and city council members and working collaboratively to basically provide better opportunities, make a positive difference in our communities, make a better future for our children. So I'm kind of excited about that. That's just something that, you know, it doesn't just happen overnight. But it was nice to get some feedback from people who are already on the edges of it and starting to have some activities in that area. The other thing I did, which I try to do every year, is the putting on the RITS, which is coming up on April 23rd. The auditions for that show, if you have never been to the RITS, I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. It's basically our student talent show. And you'd be amazed at some of the talent we have. So it's a lot of fun to go to the auditions and hopefully get the right kids on the show and...
Can we split them all?
Well, if you want to be there for five or six hours. So anyway, it's an event that I'm looking forward to and I hope everybody comes, April 23rd. It's probably at Carter High School again, I'm sure. And it's a lot of fun. Read Across America Day, that's another thing that I love to do, but I was in an all-day training in Ontario that day and could not do it. So I usually do it at Myers Elementary School, I want to apologize to them. And hopefully they will have it on a day next year when I can go because it is a lot of fun to go and read to the kids and it's just a wonderful event. Oh, yeah, tomorrow, I'm looking forward, we heard tonight from Think Together about the Wieland, it's the Wieland Clean Water Model Learning Center. And tomorrow, it will be at Rialto Middle School. It was at Cove yesterday, I believe. And I'm going to stop by tomorrow afternoon because I want to take a look at that and see what they're doing there. And it's supposed to be a very exciting, you know, hands-on experiences for kids in this big, cool semi-truck, so. Oh, this is just a little plug, I don't know if anybody saw it last night. There's a new TV show with Steve Harvey coming out called Little Big Shot. And they had the premiere last night. This show is absolutely wonderful. You see these little children that do amazing and awesome things. They're finding them from YouTube videos that have gone viral and whatever. That's how they get most of them for their talents. They come from all over the world. There was a child there who doesn't speak any English because he's from Hong Kong, I think it was. But anyway, that was the preview, the sneak preview. The real show is on Sunday nights, so if you can catch it on Sunday night, I highly recommend it. And now, let's move on with the agenda. Thank you. Okay, public hearing. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any person wishing to speak on the item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. Public hearing, pursuant to the requirements of government code and board policy, the initial 2016-17 proposal submitted by the Rialto Educations Association, REA, for an agreement between the Rialto Education Association, REA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Are you going to ask for comment?
I'm sorry. Discussion?
Oh, just for comment, public comment.
I did.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I will motion to close the public hearing.
And I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a second one. We have to open public hearing again. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Pursuant to the requirements of governmental code and board policy, the initial contract proposal for the 2016-2017 school year submitted by the Communication Workers of America, CWA, for an agreement between the Communication Workers of America, CWA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Any discussion? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And number three. This is just public information. Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report Summary covering October through December 2015, Reference D 3.1, is available. So anybody wishing to check on that? It's in the agenda. Consent Calendar Items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education, by Board of Education members or the Superintendent for individual action. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items, Reference E through J? And we have a preferential vote by our student board member?
I move to approve the consent calendar reference items E through J.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Preferential vote.
Mm-hmm, I did that. Okay, so now we just move on with...
Discussion Action Items.
Discussion Action Items, Section K. And we're going to read each one of these individually. Number one, approve an energy service company's agreement with Trane U.S. Incorporated for Energy Expenditure Plan, number three. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And is there any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approve the 2015-2016 Second Interim Financial Report as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel. Administrative Hearing, Case Number 15-16-20 and stipulated case numbers 15-16-22 and 15-16-21. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? No, we've already had that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eight fifty-nine?
Ah, yes. The meeting is adjourned at 8:59 PM. Thank you all again for being here.